Call the Castle Hills Special City Councilman in order to determine if a quorum is present, a quorum is present. Uh, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Chief Lettow, will you lead us? Thank you, Chief. Uh, while we're waiting for our fearless leader, I'm going to go ahead and jump to. Item six point two, it's a discussion of possible action and appointment to the Crime Control Prevention District. Uh, we had Ms. Valerie Molina who was there, I talked to her, she is interested in continuing to serve. So we need a motion uh from the council to proceed, Ms. Haley.
I move that Valerie Molina be reappointed to the Crime Control and Prevention District.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Danes on favor? Unanimous, thank you, council. Doing the best I can to get y'all home early. Okay, next up, we have discussion and possible action on FY twenty five. Proposed budget, Mr. Rappley.
Right, Mayor Council. So tonight, I wanted to go through with you to. Provide you some updates, the proposed budget, uh, go through some projects. As well as the unfunded requests and including what the breakdown looks like for a potential COLA. So some highlights of the. Current budget there is eight million one ninety seven four forty nine. And that's obviously now, since we've changed fiscal years, finally, October first, twenty twenty four. Through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty five. Departmented program costs have been budgeted at a reasonable level, parallels the cost of service. Does not include any additional personnel, does not include a current cost of living adjustment for employees. Right now, we have ten percent increase, uh, Ms. Davis is working with our um, our brokers through our health. Uh, it may be looking like closer to seven percent, but we don't have a final number yet. So that could change um, from that standpoint to where we're at, which couldn't. And and allow for additional dollars for the general fund. Uh, we increased the entry level for the firefighters, five fifty one thousand zero nine eight to fifty four thousand two forty three. This includes a fifty cent increase to the monthly residential rate for sanitation services. Uh, I believe that's twenty seven fifty, I believe, Ms. Davis. So uh, uh, that's to cover the landfill fees that have gone up by Waste Management. The proposed tax that was selected by you all's council, the point five four zero six six one. Uh, which includes a lower INS this year of five eight one four nine. And then is below the 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 um voter approval rate of fifty five two six eight two. With the proposed tax rate, um, that changes our positive side of revenue over expenses. Uh, the proposed tax rate created an additional hundred and almost a hundred and ten thousand to the general fund. For ad valorem collections, which leaves us at about a hundred and fifty thousand seven seventy. Just real quick, I think I showed that last year, so you could see where we're at on the five-year historical. Uh, from two thousand nineteen of where we have fluctuated uh with the tax rate. And again, as you can see, the proposed tax rate is um, is slightly lower than last year's tax rate of five four. Um, three, six, five, eight. Here, uh, just real quick, uh, want to get into some projects. So this is uh something the Parks and Projects have been working through. Um, that's the rendering, um, sort of the master plan for the commons phase. Current commons and then phase two. And then um, that's a rendering and what the pavilions look like. Uh, what's been chosen by Parks and Rec, what's been selected by the Subcommittee of Parks and Rec. I think it's the Arts Committee, right, Councilman Drus? So that's the rendering. Um, and right now, I've already essentially. Put that in as as an expenditure being a hundred and twenty thousand to program into from ARPA for those pavilions. Um, another thing here, I have City Hall Concept Program Studies, additional dollars towards the Comprehensive Plan we've talked about. Looking at potential studies, including dollars associated with. Um, what will mine have to do with looking at um, getting architects for going out to improve this building. So at the end of the day, just that leaves eighty thousand to program in from ARPA. And then about two thirty six from the seed for future projects. Right now, these are the unfunded requests. So kind of go through these real quick. So the commons, we've talked about, like with the conceptual and the master plan. There is one for bathrooms, the phase two has, you know, a boardwalk, trail connect, commons phase two for twenty six thousand. Um, fire has um, the diesel storage tank, that's more of an emergency management, that actually has been something we've been wanting to do. For the last couple of years to make sure we had diesel um on hand in case of an emergency. Uh, last year, the three doors were replaced, the front doors to the fire station, these would replace the three bays in the back. Um, remodel the restrooms, fifty thousand, update to accommodate firefighters, and now having female firefighter. Um, and I think that addresses the um, or and or will address some of the mold solely in the bathroom. The other mold has been uh addressed through the other phases of improvements to the fire station. Um, replace the bay heater and then an apparatus, MBD MDT computers. And then retention competitive adjustment to fire personnel. Um, about fifty six thousand, that's actually should have been, it's more like sixty nine thousand as a request. Um, under administrative um, financial software to centralize our financial systems. Uh, for encode, we're looking at about thirty thousand uh upfront for getting that software onboard. And then again, that leaves eighty thousand to program from ARPA and two hundred and thirty six thousand to program in from seed. So, as I mentioned in the previous slide, we're talking about a hundred and fifty thousand on the positive side. We still don't know exactly what the health insurance looks like. And there's a couple of line items I'll be going over with staff to see if we can. Look to bring down those line items as well. So we might have a a little bit of different perspective on the positive side for revenue. But if you're looking at the big picture, you have, you know, a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty thousand in the general fund. Um, eighty thousand left in ARPA and then two hundred and thirty six thousand roughly in seed for any of these future projects. I wanted to recap because. Let's see. I'll go back, I'll go back to the other one. This is the one I think I've previously showed you, I've plugged in as far as within our streets fund. For uh, the work that would need to be done, both the micro surfing and the mill and overlay. I believe that has eight streets targeted next year for micro surfacing for surfacing. And then the mill and overlay, that consists of those three streets. So that would be out of our street maintenance fund, the six hundred and fifty one thousand. So if y'all are okay with that, that would be what would be programmed in to the proposed budget moving forward. And these obviously have been recommended by our engineers, not the city manager. Uh, COLA, going back. Last year, we did a four percent COLA, well, four and a half percent COLA to employees, and the year before that, I think it was three. And then the year before that was, I think, two and a half, two and a half. Um, so this is the breakdown showing the COLAs right now. Um, the three percent at a hundred and fifty three thousand, four percent two oh four, and then of course, five percent two fifty five. Um, I will have by the next meeting, or I'll send it out ahead of the next meeting. Um, and I'll know this Friday at our s- our city manager meeting. What other cities are doing for COLAs in other cities. So I'll have that data to send out, so you can see. Obviously, to make sure we're competitive and we're staying in line with what other cities we compete with. So I have that data on Friday to send out to y'all. But this is kind of what showing three, four, and five percent. Um, if you wanted to see three and a half, we could figure that out, I would say roughly probably a hundred and sixty eight thousand. Um, if that has probably the number. And then next step, obviously, we have our public hearing on the budget and tax rate on September fourth. We will have an agenda item to make any um action or for you all as council to take any action. Um, you can actually adopt the budget that night if you want. Um, and then if not, then the September tenth is where we'll adopt the budget and then adopt the tax rate that night. So. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Joyce.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of quick ones, uh, Mr. Rappley, thank you. Um, on the street. Work that you uh have proposed here as part of the budget, the that will be funded through the street tax, right?
Well, yeah, that's a combination of street sales tax.
Yeah.
And then the billboard dollars, which goes into Fund O eight.
Okay, great. So it's no expense to the general fund.
Yeah, I think um. I don't know where we're at in that fund, I think closer to a million too, but um, uh, that's what we're, we need to start tackling some mill and overlays. Um, because now that we've done the reconstruction and we only have two streets left. Uh, we we need to start tackling the mill and overlay, and so I think as I showed you um. Back at one of our first workshops, what a three-year window might look like for mill and overlay projects moving forward.
Thanks, uh, second question. On the COLA, the the lesser number, the three percent was about a hundred and fifty three thousand. Which uses up all of whatever we have left in the budget. Can you run a scenario or two that uses a little bit less in cases of other things we want to fund?
Sure. I mean, I could, we could break it out to one or two percent, you know, that kind of thing.
Thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? Ms. Danes.
Um, okay, so. So for the diesel storage tank, eight thousand dollars, um, is that an above-ground storage tank?
I believe so, I think we'd park it over at uh, Public Works and or Fire. And that's again, in case we need like immediate response, I mean.
When you say park it, is it mobile?
No, it's.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
It was like.
No, I think, I think it came out of like when we had the ice storm, when you know, gas stations were shut down and. You know, um, our our vehicles that need diesel have it on hand, ready to go.
Right. Okay, um, so we just put it on like a pad site over by the fire station, is what you're thinking, okay? Okay, that was my question on that one. Um, I just know that anything in ground, A, costs a lot more, and B, becomes a leak. Problem uh for future generations. Um. Let me see, I had another question, where did I write that down? Oh, a clarification on the street projects. So Mr. Joyce just asked that, do we have that in the street fund? And you said, did you say we have one point two million dollars available in the street fund? Did I hear that right?
Roughly right around.
Plus or minus, I don't need an exact number, one, one point two is.
Yeah.
Ballpark is fine with me. We have more than six hundred and fifty one thousand dollars available.
Plus, plus, next year, if you look in the street maintenance fund and the proposed, it has us collecting that additional three hundred and fifty thousand. I think we get twenty percent out of billboard and then we average um, three to four hundred thousand from. Um, the sales tax portion, so we see four to five hundred thousand coming in as we move forward.
Okay, but all of that is used on streets, correct?
Oh, streets only.
Okay, streets only, got it. Okay, and then my next question was, the. Proposed rate is point five four zero six six one, which is slightly less than. Last year's rate of point five four three six five eight, and I know that. Raising taxes is not popular, um, but arguably, we have a lot of stuff we want to do. We only have a hundred and fifty three thousand dollar surplus in the current recommended budget. And as we can very clearly see on this other slide, that. If we wanted to give even just a modest three percent COLA. That's it, we couldn't do any, we could give, we could give our employees what they deserve, and then we couldn't do anything else.
Well, I again, I think there's, there's some other areas, like for instance, the. The upgrades to like the fire station could be a capital expense that we could take out of a one-time. Reserve, like within our general fund. It's like if we want to do improvements to this building. As far as capital improvements, renovations, and we took it out of the reserve, that'd be a one-time expenditure in that. Budget.
Okay.
So there's, there's ways to kind of figure this out, and it's, it's actually one point six million in the streets.
Okay, but we can't spend that on COLAs, so. Okay.
But the streets are great.
Thank you, Ms. Danes.
Uh, by the way, the mayor, sorry, I was just, when she said generator, we, that was probably the best investment we made here. Because not having power here today, um, the generator worked well, as well as the one in the fire department. But Public Works did not have a generator, sorry, Rick. So that's something we need to look at, at getting in the future for Public Works.
Mr. Rappley. Um, so I had a question about the landfill fees, you know, I I know that we've touched these a couple of times, and. I know that Rick's staff uh, needs a little bit of help because he's relying on a lot of temporary helps, so. I I question if we're better off doing a comprehensive analysis. Of how much Public Works really needs instead of just throwing fifty cents. Uh, City of San Antonio is having the same issues that we are, there's really two landfills in town, it's a. I'm blanking that Republic and Waste Management, so I mean, there's a little bit of a diopoly, if you will. And I just want to make sure that we're giving them the, the tools and specifically the funds that they need to be successful and continuing. To offer the level of service that we all love.
Well, I think um, you know, in twenty. In twenty twenty, when we raised it uh fifty cents, and then twenty one, we raised it a dollar fifty, that two dollars. Was not only for landfill fees, but it also helped since we started doing the twice-a-year bulk drop-off. And then the four or five times a year, getting the dumpsters for brush to uh fund those, you know? Um, I think the fifty cents was solely based on what we see now, and as I plugged in there, the, I think, two-dollar increase per ton. Um, which is in the landfill fee line item that we have to address that.
And I'm all for addressing the the deficit, my point is, I think that we need to allocate a little bit more dollars to public work so that. We can offer competitive wages so that we don't have to rely on temporary uh help that. In in my experience with temporary labor, they're great, but you're kind of always starting over. So it really prevents Mr. Harada from doing uh. As much as he wants to do, and I don't know how he maintains as it is, so um. I would ask that we look at that a little bit deeper.
I mean, we can, I mean, a couple of years ago is when we raised the hourly for both. Yeah, we raised the starting pay to nineteen, I believe, and then we raised the, the driver plus getting CDL bonus. Um, but it's, it's.
Well, and. Well, and I guess my my ask is that we look at it, because I, if we're going to spend fifty cents and then next year it's fifty cents, I think. It would behoove us to do a comprehensive analysis and do an adjustment once to where we need to be. And if that means paying more so we can be more attractive to applicants, then I, I'd like to for us to explore that. The the landfill fees. Yeah, I I mean, I I for my business go out to Waste Management's uh Clovel Gardens where I see our team out there. Frequently, and our rates have gone up already, so I I know it's coming. Um. It's kind of inevitable, so I want to make sure that we're giving Public Works what they need to be successful. Uh, one of the other questions I had was, uh, I looked it up and we're, the national average for the COLA is three point two. In case anybody's curious, so I really think that at a minimum, we should be average, which I hope that we aspire to be above average. Uh, but I understand that there is financial uh constraints. I don't know, that's a good question, I can look it up. Uh, while I'm looking at the Texas average from Ms. Danes. Uh, I didn't see anything about solar panels, Mr. Rappley, is that still on the table? I, I'm hoping that.
That's a future project if if considered through, I guess, if the seed, I mean, you know, there's dollars in there to be. I mean, we we know how much it's going to cost for solar panels in the fire department. Uh, we don't know yet with the cost for panels on the pavilions. Uh, so I think that's sort of. Something that um can be brought forward, that may not be captured in this budget, but can be brought forward to council. Um, sooner than later, but like I said, we don't have the cost yet for pavilion. Panels yet, we're just trying to get the pavilions up and going, and then we'll figure out what that cost is if we wanted to. Add solar panels to the pavilions, I mean, um, Parks and Projects has a a Subcommittee. For looking at solar projects for the city right now, so I think they're going through a process of looking at that. And then would make a recommendation to council, is that correct, Councilman?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Ms. Danes, to answer your question, Texas is three point two as well. Uh, Mr. Rappley, my sole intent is realizing that uh the ARPA funds and the seed funds are kind of a one-time. Deal, hopefully, we don't come across another pandemic, and so my hope is that we can invest those dollars in something that will. Uh, for lack of better words, pay dividends, and we can allocate those dollars. Uh, I would love to see them on top of the pavilions personally. Uh, and if they could be constructed in such a way that it doesn't look like an afterthought with pipes running, you know, we've run the pipes in the columns, and so it's. Like we have a vision and a plan, uh, that would be my personal preference.
Well, I'll just go back if I can to here. So if you look there where the pavilions are going, there's sort of the concrete flatwork in between, I think we sort of accounted for those. In between some of the engineering, uh, they were out there this week doing the topo and the geo. Um, from from that standpoint, you know, uh, my goal is to bring forward an agenda item next month. To hopefully authorize myself to go to the byboard to buy these pavilions. So that would account for roughly the hundred and twenty thousand of the two hundred thousand ARPA left, so. At the end of the day, if you look at it, eighty thousand plus two thirty, you know, three hundred and ten thousand left of. Available dollars for any other projects y'all want to do. Or any other project staff has requested, I mean, you know, when I look at this list too, like um. You know, anything in the commons there could be utilized within those dollars. Um, obviously, the the diesel storage tank, the bay doors. Uh, the improvements continuing in the fire station, the bay heater, any of those. The software are all eligible projects in between seed and ARPA from that standpoint, so. My hopeful goal is that at some point, you have um, recommended so we can program. And utilize all ARPA and all seed dollars sooner than later.
Yeah, I think that um, now ARPA, if it doesn't get used, gets defaulted back, I think maybe to the county or the state. Because we're an entitled entity, uh, Chief Lettow knows what I'm talking about.
Well, I think we have to make our decision on how it's going to be allocated by December.
Right, and that's kind of what I'm getting at, I rather uh, we give it back to the residents, because it's takes to some extent tax dollars, right? Um, and my hope that we can get some of those dollars back to the residents' hands so they can see it in the commons or. Whatever it might be.
Well.
Ms. Danes.
Pavilions are a good investment for the commons for the ARPA, but. Um, anything else we wanted to use that money for, ARPA-wise, in the commons is still beneficial to the community.
Okay, so a couple of questions on the proposed budget slide, which you happen to have up right now. Um, so can you clarify for me, because I'm, apologize, I do not know. Um, which of, well, let me just ask specific, specifically if certain of these can be. Um, can be used from ARPA funds or seed funds? Can the restroom remodel and the fire station be, can it, can it utilize ARPA or seed dollars?
Uh, sure, e- either one.
Okay, how about the um, financial software encode?
Uh, either one.
Okay, but the competitive adjustment, fire personnel cannot correct.
No, that would have to be something that would come out of the hundred and fifty, hundred and sixty on the positive side of the revenue for general.
Right. Okay, diesel storage tank?
Uh, sure.
Okay. Um, bay doors?
Yes.
Loving the answers to these questions, okay, bay heater?
Uh, yes, basically all those projects.
Everything but the fire personnel.
Be used for ARPA or seed except for the retention competitive adjustment.
Okay, thank you.
But I could tell you, if we're prioritizing things, I'm going to tell you that. Um, we're, we're the financial software encode. Um, since we get dinged on that every year in our audit, um, it's been something we've been trying to do for a long time. That needs to be done like yesterday, so.
Well, just my two cents, I think out of, if I were to prioritize, I would say restroom remodel and encode would be. The top two on my list.
Thank you, Ms. Danes, Ms. Haley.
How much is the generator for Public Works? Again, we've talked about this before, and I don't remember what the numbers.
It was about twenty to twenty-five thousand for Public Works.
So can we get, we can get that out of ARPA too, can't we?
Hmm.
Well, I, I think it's pretty important that Public Works has a generator in their department.
We could certainly get some cost of those, I think the last time we looked at it was twenty to twenty-five.
Any other comments, questions, counsel?
Oh, I was thinking about. We were talking at one time about as these pavilions get built and people are going to want to start using them and having their parties and things. That you were looking at doing a policy and having some way that we could. People want to make a reservation and they have to pay to be able to reserve the spot, and how, where are we on that?
Let's pull it a little bit closer to the budget, I don't want to.
Well, I know, but but this is part of the, if we're talking about the common, we're talking about building, we can use that money for the commons improvements is where I was going with it. Not the budget part, that's what I was thinking about as we're adding revenue to, to things.
As we get closer to, you know, uh, construction of those, that a, a policy might be timely. Um, and then figuring out like a reservation, um, a lot of cities have a cost or a rate related to. Um, renting those, so it's just a matter of trying to figure out what that is.
Okay, I'd just like for us to get that on our radar.
It's you all as council to determine if you want a rate or not. I think there needs to be a policy about use and reservation, but the rate is ultimately in y'all's determination. Uh, from that standpoint, because right now, I mean, I think our code says the mayor has the authority to approve events. In the commons, so um, I think we need to get like other cities where we have a reservation in place. Um, because every weekend, there might be a birthday party, um, because the playground is there as well.
Agreed, thank you. Mr. Joyce.
One more quick one, please, uh, Mr. Rappley, on the uh Economic Development Committee. We're seeing a proposed budget of three thousand, didn't we approve a five thousand dollar allocation for them a month?
Yes, that's one we got to change.
Okay.
Yeah.
Was it five or seventy-five hundred, Mr. Joyce?
No, it was five thousand um, for the beautification, maybe it was wishful thinking.
Discussion about that, but I think it was five thousand.
No, the the the, remember the one that's being done right now?
Yeah, that study, right.
Study, that is the. Study, that is the price. That, that was in this budget. But we, that's one of the line items we have to change and modify after we.
Okay.
Have some other variables solid on, on the budget itself.
Thanks.
My, my intent to show you this was to say. We, we have about a hundred and fifty thousand on the positive side for y'all to know. Um. That might just go up a bit. That's, that's it.
Counsel, any further comments, questions, concerns?
So again, tonight I was more informational, uh, get a little bit more direction. From y'all's council on things you'd like to see in this budget. Um. You'll be getting another copy of this the next meeting, which probably has our, which solidifies our health insurance. Uh, from that standpoint. And then after we have some. Meetings on some of these line items, those might change on certain line items. So, uh, that, that could change on the positive side from a hundred and fifty. If, if I'm best guessing, it might go up to about. Give or take one seventy-five or eighty, so. But we will show other cola opportunities and then I will have, uh, what other cities are, are doing as well, so.
Perfect. Ms. Danes.
Okay, well, I mean, I want to see, I want to see a reasonable average. I would like to be average at best or at, or absolute least. Um, cola, but then I also want to see some money in for at least a study to work on. The improvements of this building, which we talked about before, but I don't know if that's in here somewhere.
Well, as I discussed with Councilman Joyce, because he sent me an email basically saying that. Um, I, you know, some of the studies that need to be done, of course, looking at this building. I think there was a couple out of the comprehensive plan, maybe Jackson Keller, which we'll probably work with, with the City of San Antonio on that one. And then I think there was another one for looking at, uh, the bike trails or something as part of the comp plan.
Right, bike trails, green spaces. There's, there's a number of them and I, I think most of that was captured in your fifty to a hundred thousand dollar line for ARPA.
Yeah.
I mean, it's. We're going to meet tomorrow with the engineers, Mr. Rappley and I, and kind of go through that and, and get some real cost from them. But for the moment, he's programmed fifty to a hundred thousand for all of those.
So.
Yes.
Yeah. So like, for instance, that's going to change in the seed fund. You know, under thirty, I believe, showing the total and then we'll break down those costs programmed in, out of that fund. What will be coming out of there? If that's study dollars, then we'd have a line item for. You know, study engineering, which would be applied to what other comp plan and looking at this be, building as well. Because, um, as we discussed at the last council meeting, we're going to have to go out. And issue, um, the RFQs, I believe, for architects at some point. So we're going to need some money for that.
Okay, if there's no, Ms. Haley?
For the people that might be watching this online, would you explain what seed, just spell out what seed is and what ARPA is that we, we know what you're talking about, but somebody watching may. Or for later, it's just helpful.
So the, uh, ARPA is the, uh, the dollars, the American Recovery.
Rescue Plan.
Rescue. Um, funds and then the seed is the, um. It's for the, it's the dollars, the electric laws are going to be converted for electric, um. Trying to remember what. The conversion electricity.
I think it's community investment.
Community investment, sorry. Yes, you're right. So the dollars that were given back from CPS years ago, ten years ago, I believe.
Yeah, thank you.
I think that's, the, the city got back, I think in two thousand fourteen, like eight hundred thousand dollars. So over time, projects have been utilized out of there and now we're down to about two thirty-six, two forty. To finally close that out with projects.
Okay, if there is, Ms. Danes.
No, no, please, I, I need a lot of direction because I want to make sure.
Well, this isn't, I'm asking questions. This is not giving you direction necessarily. Um. So we are, we're having a public hearing. On the tax rate on September fourth.
And the budget.
And the budget, but specifically on the tax rate. And right now we are assuming we're going. The, the tax rate, it's right here at my fingertips.
Yeah.
Is, um. Zero. Point five four zero six six one. And is there, is there. A world where we would not adopt that tax rate and we would maybe. Ouch that up a teensy-tinsy bit so that we had more money for a cola or for. Projects that we think are valuable for the city?
Well, if we go to, if we go over the voter approval rate, that.
Is that the voter approval rate though?
Um, it's just slightly below. I mean, I could have, um. Figure that.
Oh, so even this zero point whatever six six one.
The.
Rigors in election?
The, since we're below the point five four six three five eight. Um, I think that would trigger because of the voter approval was right at there, but we can look at that real quick. I mean, but I, I, I was. You know, again, that, that it, there is a decrease. Um, and with additional ad valorem collections, um, that, that was pretty positive for all of us on this budget. Counsel not necessarily to, you know, increase taxes higher. Um, uh, and, and the reason why our, it looks that way too, is because our MNO and debt went down. So, but the MNO is slightly up. Um, but I can find out through Ms. Wallace and, and Nora what that might look like. Um.
I mean, I don't, I, I, I don't want to burden. The residents of Castle Hills with more taxes. And I realize that because. The property values went up, everybody's going to be paying more taxes, no matter how much we lower our tax rate. Um, because I've seen my property tax bill, so I know. Um, I just was wondering, I, one of the things that we saw last year was how much like per. For an average, you know, five hundred and fifty thousand dollar home or whatever, how much that change was. So maybe if we could look at that to see.
If, if I recall, because it, we, we just, the notice will be published in the paper tomorrow and I think we had. Uh, it was like point. Five, five, something as the voter approval. So we're like right there on the cusp of, of. Having to, um, stay below that. So it wouldn't trigger an election. But again. In discussing this with Ms. Wallace and Ms. Davis, originally this tax rate, um, we felt it was the right tax rate because. Again, it was a decrease from last year, but we were a positive on the revenue. For the general fund. Um, I know we have a lot of, um. Uh, unfunded requests and we have a cola to look at. Um, but I, I think there's kind of ways we can get there without having to go higher, uh, from that standpoint. And again, remember we, you know, um. I, I, you know, I would say give all the employees five percent because I don't get a cola, but, um, we all understand, you know. Financials and funding and, um, to go from two and a half to three and a half to last year, four and a half. Um, but you know, the cost of living is increasing, so I, I would just hope that we would be able to maintain that. Um, and be a little competitive for employees as well.
I'm all for that. Just saying.
Any further comments or questions? Okay, do we have any announcements, counsel? Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, Mr. May.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
We have a motion, Mr. May, do we have a second, second?
Second.
By Mr. Smith on favor. unanimous, thank you, counsel, at seven ten, meeting is adjourned. Thank you for being here with us this evening.